College Bill order, our special city council meeting at 6:00 PM, July the 18th, 2022. And the first order of business is to receive public comments, and I have four public comments here. All have been written out and for me to read, so I'll read those. First one is from Joe Cole, 434 East Mona Avenue. "I think that the city should build single-family home, prevent SFH residential customers from wastewater based on the actual amount of water they use month-to-month. Currently, the monthly wastewater rate for homes is built based on the average water usage between the months of December, January, and February. Problem with this is that customers may end up being billed at a much higher rate than what they're actually using month-to-month, and you'll be locked into that rate for the entire year. For instance, due to a single very high water use month in the winter, I was billed a wastewater rate that's equal to 160% of my actual water use in the months of April and May 2022. This could add nearly $400 in sewer charges annually compared to the previous year for an amount that I'm not actually using. On the other hand, multifamily, commercial, school, and municipal customers are locked in a whatever rate, I'm sorry, wastewater rates equal to 85% or 90% of their actual water use. So again, I believe that SFH residential customer wastewater rate should be built based on their actual water usage, like all other customers." Second item is from Gilbert Cavellio or Cavello, C-A-V-E-L-L-O, 703 San Juan Drive, Duncanville 75116. "No cost should be passed on to Duncanville residents if the automated water metering infrastructure is approved because our water bill including sewer charges is already extremely high. The sewer charges are outrageous." Next item is from Eddie Taylor, 422 Oleander Street. "There seems to be a significant increase in our water bill over the years in Duncanville. There are other suburbs that are paying far less than our community. Those that are in position to build stronger tax base need to do more to help provide much-needed help for those on fixed incomes as well as others. There's no home state exemption in here in Duncanville. As a council, y'all will eventually cause us as residents to choose to pay more than what we earn." Next item is from Cecilia Bradley, 426 Wesley Lane. "It's brought to my attention that the water rates in Duncanville will be increasing again. I'm on a fixed income and I can afford the increase. At your special meeting today, please address my concern about the increase today. Thank you." That concludes item number two on our agenda, the public comments. Are those the only public comments we've received?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving on to item number three on our agenda, we'll see a presentation and discussion on wastewater rate study for Willdan Financial Services City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have spoken of this process. This is a process that generally cities go through either annually or biannually. In 2018, we had our last rate study. What a rate study does for people listening is an opportunity to see, sometimes it's you're paying too much, sometimes you're paying too little, and it can vary. But it allows us an opportunity to look at the costs the city incurs for providing the water service, very much like what they'll talk to you about today or things, for example, we purchase water, so we don't necessarily have water in the ground that we're selling to people, we are a reseller of water. We also pay someone to process our sewer, which is the Trinity River Authority. And so there is a cost that's associated with it. The last time we had a rate study was 2018. Annually, we receive increases for those services in which we resell. And so as you're going to hear us talk about today is, we're going to tell you the options. What we try to find out is how much does it cost the city to provide the services, including some are fixed, some are varied, as you hear about the, we talked about earlier, and some even opportunities for discounted rates. But most importantly, what we are looking at is what is the cost of providing this enterprise fund? It is supposed to be self-sustaining, which means that the funding that supports that infrastructure comes. Very similar to Encore, we are a enterprise fund when it comes to water and sewer. And so what we plan to do today is to give an overview of what our consultants have found as far as where our rates compare to other rates, what are our long-term costs for repairs, which includes your water sewer line repairs. Many cases, you borrow money for capital, and yes, even some automation of some of our systems. We also recognize that we have implemented, many have talked about, a new utility billing system. And that is a system that's created these wonderful bills that no one can read, and we recognize that and have every intention and are working currently with Munis to fix it. When we first saw them, Cassandra came to us and was like, "We can't read this." And sometimes you gotta push back to technology companies because they're saying, "This is all we can do," but my team has said, "That's not acceptable." So we want to have reader-friendly bills, and so we will be working on getting that resolved as quickly as possible and have been talking with the vendor who manages that system for that. But all of those costs you'll hear go into this day, and so our financial team today is going to give you an overview. We're not asking to make a vote on a decision, but this decision will be part of how we propose in the budget, and that's where the decision-making will come. And so we're looking for some advice from Council today on which methods you'd like for us to look at, and then from there, we will develop our budget based on that information. And so I will now turn it over to Ms. Agmore, who will talk to you and introduce our vendor.
Yes, Mayor and Council, tonight we have Willdan Financial, Dan Jackson and his team. They have come to us, they have done rate studies before for the city of Duncanville, and so now they've come back again. Like Ms. Rita said, this is the last time this is done, is 2018. So with that, I will turn it over to Dan Jackson and his group to present the water rate study.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Dan Jackson. I am Vice President of Willdan Financial Services. I've got my team here with me tonight, the team that developed this rate study and long-term financial plan. Mr. Dennis Gore, Senior Project Manager with Willdan, and Mr. Robin Carrick, Project Analyst with Willdan. I'm at the privilege of serving as the city's Rate Consultant for the last 20 years, since 2002, so that's why I may look familiar to a few of you. Every four or five years or so, we are asked to come before the city and do a new long-term financial plan and rate evaluation. That's because long-term rate plans are not guarantees. Forecasts are not guarantees, they're predictions based on a series of reasonable assumptions. Also, as you might have noticed, things tend to change over time. You know, the utility as it exists today is different from the utility as it existed 20 years ago. The cost pressures that your utility is facing is very, very different than what it was just a few years ago. The well-run utility, and the city of Duncanville is a very well-run water and wastewater utility, has to adapt to these changes to ensure that you remain financially solvent, but at the same time, you provide this service to your customers in a manner that minimizes to the best extent possible the bill that they are asked to pay. Well, keeping water rates low is a very admirable goal. It's a goal every utility faces. However, the utility, again, the well-managed utility, has to balance the desire to keep rates as low as possible with the need to invest in your system to ensure that it operates properly. That answer is always somewhere in the middle. We do work for over 100 cities here in the state of Texas and over 200 cities around the country, and we work for some cities that have incredibly low rates, but they have low rates because they're not investing anything in their system. And so their system is basically unreliable and falling apart. Water tastes terrible and it leaks, so that is not necessarily the best way to run the system. The ultimately rate plan and financial plan that you adopt is the one that reflects your needs, your desires, and your objectives and goals for how you want the water utility to operate. In a sense, I've got the easy job, we just crunch the numbers, and we help you determine what is in the best interest of the city.
As you go through this presentation, if we have questions and comments, are we to wait until the end or we can?
No, no, I think at the time the question comes up would be best because otherwise, otherwise, you know, the context of the question might get lost. So definitely, if you have a question, feel free to ask.
Okay, a couple of comments. One, there's, there has been some analysis and knowledge of other cities' water and sewer rates and how they compare to Duncanville. And there are cities in the metroplex with water and sewer rates less than Duncanville. As a matter of fact, I can think of one, Wilma. Wilma has the lowest water and sewer rates in the metroplex, and I know that from personal experience. However, what they don't have is an infrastructure maintenance program. They don't have it. And so consequently, about a year or so ago, when their sewer main broke and spilled raw sewage into the Trinity River, they were forced to go out and borrow several million dollars in order to get that fixed. So it's kind of like the old commercial, "You can pay me now or you can pay me later." Second thing is that I think most people are aware of what happened to Flint some years ago. And the underlying reason of what happened in Flint is that their decision-makers wanted to lower the cost of water. And so they changed to another source to get the raw water front, and that eventually wound up poisoning a lot of people.
Yes, yeah, the Flint example is one that many cities have looked at with the expectation and the hope that they don't ever be in that position either. You know, again, while nobody wants to pay more for anything at any time for any reason, and we certainly understand that, and that's why any recommendation we make for rate adjustments is one that would only be made after very, very careful consideration. However, while nobody wants to pay more, what people want even less is an unreliable water system. Imagine getting up at 3:00 in the morning and go get a drink of water, and you turn that faucet and nothing comes out, or if you flush your commode and nothing happens. You don't want that. So therefore, that means that some level of investment is going to be necessary in the system to keep it operating properly. One of the, you know, one of the advantages is that, as was indicated in the introduction, water is a business. You produce water, water is a product, like a McDonald's hamburger or a gallon of gasoline or anything else. It costs the city money to prepare this product and deliver it to the customer, and all you're asking your customers to do is pay what it costs you to provide that service. You don't make a profit, your water utility, you don't have shareholders, you're not making a return on investment, all you're trying to do is cover your costs. And guess what? Like any business, your costs are going up at some point at a fairly alarming rate. As a matter of fact, it's a good segue into my first chart here, and that is what's happening in the industry in general. Water utility, water is a precious and diminishing natural resource. There are 7 billion people on the planet today, there were 1 billion people 100 years ago, but we have the exact same amount of fresh water. So water resources all over the country are becoming much more strained. The average utility has been increasing its rates 5% to 6% every year across the United States, and that trend is expected to continue. As a matter of fact, the American Water Works Association forecasts that water and sewer rates across the country are going to triple in the next 15 years. Now, why is that happening? Well, a lot of the reasons why rates go up and why costs go up are beyond the control of utility. I mean, you, since you run a business, you're susceptible to inflation. When inflation goes up, when the costs go up of salaries and insurance and workers' comp go up, guess what? You know, that has to be reflected in the rate. More importantly, it costs millions of dollars to lay those water lines and to build those water tanks and to push that water through your, through your city. A lot of people have the mistaken impression that the only cost of water is those molecules of water that you drink. That's not it at all. The cost of, the vast majority of the cost of water is the infrastructure that you have to build to get that water to the ultimate source. And, and guess what? Like any infrastructure, it wears out over time. So part of this rate plan that we're developing for you is one that will enable you to invest over $50 million in the upkeep, repair, maintenance, and overhaul of your water and sewer system over the next decade. And a final thing, we're going to talk about how your rates compare to other utilities in just a second, but keep this in mind, in any rate comparison, 30% to 40% of utilities in the United States right now charge rates that do not cover their costs. In other words, what they're doing is they're subsidizing their water and sewer utility from their general fund. Now, as a very famous politician once said, "The problem with subsidies is that sooner or later, you run out of other people's money." And every dollar that a city uses to subsidize its water rates is a dollar that is not available for police, fire, streets, roads, and other vital city services. The city of Duncanville does not, at this time, subsidize its water and sewer operation, although you're kind of on the brink at this point, and that's one of the reasons why we have this water rate plan. So, we've talked about the industry in general, let's talk about the city of Duncanville in particular. Yes, we did do a last rate plan in 2018. However, the city has not adjusted its rates since 2019. You've gone three years without a rate adjustment. I can count on one hand the number of cities that we work for in the state of Texas that have gone three or more years without a rate increase. There aren't that many of them, I'll tell you that. So I think it's very admirable, and I think it shows resolve on the part of the city to want to keep this, this cost as low as possible to your rate payers. However, costs have kept going up, and so your revenues haven't gone up, and now your utility fund is starting to struggle. It's starting to have to access its reserves in order to cover its costs. It's like dipping into a savings account to pay your expenses, that's what's happening right now. Another thing that's happening is, guess what? You know, an inflation rate of 9.1% is a very bad thing. It certainly is, we certainly notice it every time you go to the grocery store, but it's also noticed in your water rates because it's causing all your costs, all your water costs to go up as well. Furthermore, the TRA, who is, who treats all of your wastewater, you take all your sewage and you process it and you deliver it to TRA, and they treat the sewage. They have announced the intention to implement significant increases in the costs they charge you over the next five years. They're talking about a 20% increase next year and another 20% increase the year after that. You have no choice but to pass that cost through to your ultimate rate payer. Now, here's something that's real good about your fund. Your fund is debt-free right now. Once again, on this hand, I can count the number of utilities that I work for that have no debt. So I think it's a very good thing that you've got no debt. And however, you're planning on funding $53 million in capital improvements and $6 million in a new AMI system directly from the rates. This is money that will go directly into the streets, alleyways of the city. It will be used to build assets that not only you will use, but your children and your grandchildren and maybe even your great-grandchildren will be using. So, while you are, yes, sir?
I'm sorry, go ahead, finish your thought.
So while it's never easy to ask people to pay more, one of the advantages of a water system is that the money goes directly back into the city.
Yeah, well, I want to back up to something you said about the city of Duncanville. You said that it's pretty rare that a city would go from 2019 to 2022 without a water rate increase.
Correct.
So on average, are you seeing that cities are adding that increase on an annual basis since you said it's going up 6% a year?
Yes, the general trend among most cities is to do some form of adjustment every year because they know costs are going up. They know in the long run, costs are going to be greater. And so where a lot of cities run into difficulties is that they, they hold rates down year after year after year after year after year, and then they, and then they do a big increase. Rate payers don't like surprises in their water bills. Most rate payers are very rational. They understand that the cost goes up over time, and so if costs go up a few percent each year, that's just due to the fact that, well, you know, that's life, costs do go up. And, and also, the other benefit of doing annual rate adjustments is that it allows people to gradually adjust their household budgets to reflect the higher costs, and it's not just some big increase overnight. So we, we recommend, we almost always, annual rate adjustments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
I will say that I seem to recall that being Duncanville's experience back in the early part of the last decade, there were several years in which there was no rate increase on its sewer utilities. So circa the mid part of the last decade, a different council implemented a rate program that had increases over several years, and that was necessary to kind of balance out for those years that nothing happened. The preferable way would be to just, to go up a little bit every year, simply just to cover what Dallas Water Utilities and Trinity River are into.
Yes, I couldn't agree more. And right now, the situation that the city is in is that the combination of the increasing costs from TRA and DWU, the increasing inflation, the fact, the necessity to fund $53 million of investment, all of those factors together are putting a lot of pressure on the rate plan and is leading to our recommendations that we're going to present to you tonight.
Excuse me, I just want to make one comment for general education, interest purposes, that in the State of the City presentation that I made in January of this year, I made a statement talking from one of our water utility positions in terms of our asset, that we are going to have to increase the water rate this year in 2022. That statement was made in the public statement in the State of the City address in January. So no one should walk away, listening or in this room today, thinking that this is a surprise. There has been a deep, deep analysis done on our water rates by our financial, by city manager, by staff to say, "What is the future? What is our infrastructure? What are those needs?" And that information was compounded, put together, and passed on to me and this council in late last year, knowing that this is where we are today. So where we are today in terms of discussing this is not a surprise. It's forecasted, it's necessary, and it's something that we have to do.
Okay, so what do people actually pay for water service and sewer service here in the city? Well, if you're a residential customer, you pay two types of rates. You pay a minimum charge, and then you pay a rate for every 1,000 gallons that you use. A residential minimum, a residential customer pays a monthly minimum charge of $14, and they get the first 1,000 gallons included in that. Then they pay what's called an inverted block rate. The more you use, the more you pay. If they use between 1 and 7,000 gallons, they pay $3.76 per 1,000 gallons. That rate goes up to $4.85 for between 7,000 and 15, $5.98 for 15,000 to 30,000, and $7.09 above 30,000. The idea of an inverted block rate is to try to encourage conservation. It ensures that people get the water that they need, but if they use greater than average amounts of water, then they pay greater amounts for that. The average customer here in the city uses somewhere around 6,000 to 7,000 gallons a month. Now, of course, that's going to be more in the summer, going to be a little less in the winter, but average is just that, it's an average. You've got a couple of other classes, irrigation, schools, and municipal, they pay, they pay similar rates. On the sewer side, a residential customer pays a minimum charge of $19.25, and then they pay a biometric rate of $8.22 based on a three-month winter average of January, February, and March. And if at some point in the conversation you'd like to talk a little more about the reason why, the reason why winter averages are used, I'd be happy to go into that. But what people really want to know is, how much do I pay each month, and how does it compare to other cities? Now, remember, as I told you, a lot of cities charge rates that don't cover their costs. With that in mind, for 7,000 gallons of water and sewer service, which again is the average amount that a rate payer here in Duncanville uses, each month, that customer pays $96.91, and it's just for water and sewer. You know, a bill is going to include more than that, it's going to include solid waste charges and taxes and stuff like that. This is just the water and sewer charge. What this chart does is compare it to other utilities here in the North Texas area. As you can see, your rates are about where you would expect them to be. You're higher than some, you're lower than others. You are a little, you are a little higher than the state average. That's typical for North Texas. You know, we use surface water here in North Texas. That's expensive because you have to build those lakes. It cost North Texas Municipal Water District a billion dollars to build their most recent lake, billion with a B. Dallas Water Utilities is facing similar costs, costs like that. So you are higher than North Richland Hills, Capel, you're a little higher than Hurst, but if you look at many of the cities in this part of the metroplex, you are actually at or below them. You're less than Cedar Hill, you're less than Ovia, Red Oak, Midlothian, Mansfield. Yes, sir?
And I will say that, you know, when you include on that chart Dallas, for example, Dallas is the usual supply of water.
Correct.
It's Fort Worth. And it is true that Dallas charges its residential customer less than its customer city, which is us. So one could argue, ah, maybe comparing us to Dallas and Fort Worth is not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison.
I could not agree more. The only reason I put this in here is that a lot of people ask about Dallas. You are absolutely right. It is not fair to compare the city of Duncanville's rates to Dallas because, A, Dallas is a city of a million people, it's got a million people crammed in a relatively small area. And so one of the general rules of water is that the more people you have, the less it costs for every 1,000 gallons for, because of the economies of scale. Secondly, as you said, Dallas has a lot of wholesale customers. They push off a lot of their costs to those wholesale customers who very conveniently don't reside in the city. And so cities like Duncanville, DeSoto, and all the other customers pay Dallas, and that offsets some of their costs. So yes, it's not fair. Fort Worth is in the same position. They're also a regional provider. But again, the only reason I can put it in this comparison is that people, people generally ask about it. But when you look at comparing yourselves to cities most similar to you, like DeSoto and Cedar Hill and Red Oak and Midlothian, you're right in the ballgame there, you're at or below them. I know it's very common for people to say, "We've got the highest rates in the city." I hear that all the time. The data just doesn't back that up. Yes, you are higher than some, you're lower than, that's about where you'd expect to be. Okay.
Good question. Well, so throwing out the Fort Worth's and the Dallas, when you look at Capel, Grapevine, Grand Prairie, how is it that we're all paying the same amount of water we're getting from the utilities that they've been able to maintain those lower levels?
There are potentially lots of reasons for that. One is the capital improvements. How much do these cities invest in capital improvements? I don't really know. I don't work for Erving. We do work for Capel, they do a pretty good job at capital improvements, but Capel's system is pretty new because Capel has a lot of growth. So they've had, they've had development come in, they've had developers put in lines, they've had developers make investments in the city, and so they...
Impact fees.
Impact fees.
Water sewer impact fees. Some of those can be $30,000, $40,000 when they have new construction going on, and so in the cities who have water impact fees or water sewer impact fees from development that goes into your fund and it really underwrites a lot of your cost.
Thank you. And then, then there's the, some cities simply charge a rate that's lower. And then there's another city. Let's take another great example is the city of Plano. Plano long ago adopted a policy where they would charge for the first 3,000 gallons 65 cents per 1,000 gallons because they have a fairly large retiree community there, including my in-laws, by the way, so I'm ungrateful for that. But their highest rate, if you get over 20,000 gallons, they charge almost $10 a 1,000 gallons. So they go, "So if I were to put Plano on this comparison, it would be right here. But if I put Plano on this comparison at 20,000 gallons, they'd be right here." So I mean, it's always problematic to do rate comparisons, it's never ideal, it's never perfect. The only real thing that, the only real question you have to ask is, are our rates really out of proportion to what other people are paying? I mean, are people here paying two or three times what everybody else is paying? The answer is no, absolutely not. You're right in the ballpark with what other people pay.
Well, I think it's important too to note what is included in this umbrella term called infrastructure. There's the maintenance of the lines. I mean, if you read the city manager's weekly report and it comes out of our Department of Publics, what Public Works, how many valves are being exercised, how much water is being used, how much sanitation has to be cared for, how many chemicals are being used in order to keep our water at a safe level? All that, all that comes together in infrastructure when we have a leak, when we have broken lines, when we're doing pipe bursting. All that is part of the infrastructure maintenance of what goes on in our entire city. And those costs, if you were to do a profit-loss statement on our enterprise fund for, for water and sewage, as it's been stated, this is a business. So if you take a P and L, put a P and L, the profit and loss statement together strictly for what's going on in water, we have to buy the water, we have to sell the water, and then we have to maintain every single aspect of delivering that water from our tanks into the customer's faucet. That's the infrastructure. And all of those little bitty pieces, if not taken into full account, can sometimes be overlooked in terms of what is infrastructure. It's very, very important, and if we don't keep up our infrastructure, as you said, sir, there's the possibility that all of a sudden you hit your faucet and something doesn't come out or it comes out brown, even worst case. Even worst case. So that, the maintenance of our infrastructure, and I invite everyone over public to, to read our weekly report coming from our city manager in terms of our public works, in terms of what is going on with water, how much water is being used, how many tanks or how many valves are being exercised, and how much maintenance is going on for all of the pipes throughout this entire city. It's a very, very important number to understand how that term "infrastructure" applies in terms of the cost and maintenance that goes into these rates.
Are we allowed to ask a question?
No. I'm sorry, Mr. Reno, this is.
No, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
Just a quick, couple of quick charts on background. Here in the city, you've got about fifteen thousand water accounts, about fourteen thousand wastewater accounts. To no great surprise, the vast majority of them are residential apartments. Only, we're only looking at a very limited amount of growth for the next decade, the city's basically built out. What that tells us is that unlike your Frisco's and your McKinney's, which can push off a lot of their costs to new development and new growth, unfortunately, here in the city, it's the existing ratepayers that are ultimately going to be responsible for the system now and in the future. Now, this chart right here is a, is a chart showing historical water usage by the city. See, this is kind of interesting to guys like me, but, you know, what does that say? But what it shows is, while your account growth hasn't really been very much at all, your water usage has steadily declined over the last seven years. You sold, you sold one point five billion gallons of water in 2014, and by 2022, that number is down to one point two nine billion. That's telling us that people are using water more efficiently and more effectively here in the city. That's exactly what you want. However, there's a great big caveat here, and that is, based on the temperatures this summer, this number might spike up a little bit more than predicted. So let's kind of keep our eye on that.
Excuse me, would that also be attributed to the water lines and leakage not being a problem?
Absolutely.
Have wire main break, she loses a lot of water, and so by managing those pipes, we've actually been able to lose less water?
Yes, both, both from the city standpoint and the customer standpoint, you know? If, if a customer has a leak on his or her property, it's bad for that customer, and it's bad for the city, because the city has to, has to have that water resource available. So it's, it's very important that people take whatever steps are necessary to ensure that they minimize their leakage, their toilets running, all of that stuff.
So then, difference on the number of water customers, residential water customers, and wastewater customers, are those of us that are on subject?
For the most part, that's correct.
Okay, sorry. What's the forecast based on, when, previous line?
This, this line. Well, the forecast is based on the last twelve months being considered to be fairly, a fairly normal representation of usage. Here's the deal, water usage is really based on weather. You know, if it's a dry summer, this number's going to spike. If it's a wet summer, this is going to spike. So how do you forecast based on that? Well, you, you basically assume everything's going to be normal. And then, some years you're going to collect more, you think, other years you're going to collect a little less than, you think. Until somebody figures out a way to predict how much rain there's going to be in 2025, that's really the best way to do it at this point. So we do think, we do think that the usage per meter has bottomed out. We don't think it's going to go down much more, because you're down about seven thousand gallons a customer. Across the country, across the country, the average is more like nine or ten thousand, so you're considerably below the average. But, and it could go down a little bit more, we're just not expecting that to happen. Okay, let's talk a little bit about your costs. Again, forecast is not a guarantee, it's a prediction. What are some of the factors that are driving the new long-term financial plan? Well, the most important factor is going to be that Dallas Water Utility increases and the TRA increases. So far, Dallas Water Utilities is anticipating about a three to five percent increase every year, and we built that into our model. But TRA has announced the intention to do an eight percent rate increase in 2023, a twenty percent rate increase in 2024, and a twenty percent rate increase in 2025. Unfortunately, that cost is going to just flow right through to you. Furthermore, there, you know, these are costs you can't, that's a cost you can't control. Your operating cost, the cost you can control, we are seeing inflation taking a bigger bite and, and having a bigger impact on your long-term costs. And then, finally, we've got the capital improvement plan that has fifty-three million dollars through 2032. Almost all of it water, forty-nine million water, only three point seven million wastewater. And then, we've got an AMI project of six million dollars as well. So we're going to present you two potential alternative rate plans. The first rate plan is just you fund the entire capital, the entire fifty-three million dollars directly from rates, like you've been doing in the past. The second, for you, just for your consideration, since this is an information presentation only, is, maybe you consider issuing some long-term debt to fund some of that. There are advantages and disadvantages of doing so, and we'll discuss that in just a second.
Not, not a question per se, but just, Madam City Manager, when we go to budget deliberations, can we invite TRA? They've done that before, they come out and talk to us as part of our budget presentation so that we can hear from them what's driving their cost up so much in the next two, three.
Get an item, yes.
All right, thank you.
I'll let, go back to the twenty percent increase in 2024 and 2025. Is that because of known capital improvement projects that they're going to be taking on?
Yes, that, that is correct. They're planning to issue a lot of debt between 2024 and 2027, a lot of debt. I'm not exactly sure of the specific capital improvements they're doing, but the most that they've issued in a while. So that's why they're projecting higher increases in those years.
And that's, and that's why I say, let's, let's have them over so that they can tell us specifically, you know.
Many of them are federal up, up mandates. So the federal government, when you deal with, especially with wastewater, they set their standards, and sometimes you learn more, and they make different changes. And so, there have been ways in which water source companies have been able to make money and, and sell things, but the biggest issue is the mandates, as you learn more from an environmental standpoint, are requiring upgrades, and they're giving deadlines on when the water source authorities have to have these plants upgraded. And certain standards have definitely increased with more knowledge over time of what's required.
Yeah, I think it's going to be really important to share that. And if we get somebody from TRA to share that with the public, because it's a part that they don't always get to hear about, but it all feeds into these increases that we're going to see.
Absolutely.
Okay, so this chart here has a lot of numbers on it, but what it shows is as follows. This is a breakdown of your operating costs, your transfers, and then your capital costs for your CIP plan. As you can see, your operating cost is going to go up, a million or two a year, and that's almost all DWU and TRA. You do a general fund transfer, like all responsible utilities do, where you reimburse the general fund for the services that they provide to the water fund. That's about two point three million dollars a year. But here's your, here's your CIP. Your capital cost, you're looking at six to eight million dollars a year over the next three to four years, or actually, over the next five years. And then it's expected to fall a little bit to four to five million dollars. That's a lot of cash that's going to be expended. But once again, it's going to go to build assets that are going to be in service fifty years from now. So, as you can see, your total cost of service is twenty-four point three million dollars in the current year, and it is gradually expected to increase to thirty million dollars, almost thirty-one million by 2032. So, let's take a look at the two rate scenarios. The first scenario is what I call the status quo scenario. It's the same basic. It is, what we would recommend to, that the city consider is implementing a five-year rate plan with rate adjustments effective on October first of each year. One ordinance, one vote, and then five, and then in October of each of the next five years, the rate adjustments would go into place. The rate adjustments, the, the rate plan assumes no change in your rate structure, basically percentage increases for each of your customer classes, with a uniform percent adjustment for your base charge and your volume charge. Obviously, it's based, what, what many cities do is adopt a five-year plan, and then come back after about two or three years, kind of look at them and see where they are as opposed to where they thought they'd be, which gives you the ability, at any time in the future, you can implement a five-year plan and still go back in and modify it at any time you'd like. But a five-year plan sets you on the course towards being able to finance all of your capital needs. Now, I'm just going to show you the rates themselves, and then I'll show you the more important chart, and that is the impact on an average rate payer. As you can see, if you adopt this plan, effective in October of 2022, you would adjust your monthly residential minimum charge from fourteen dollars to sixteen-ten. You would adjust each of your volumetric rates by about fifty to seventy-five cents per thousand gallons. Same proportionate increase on your commercial rates. On the wastewater side, you would adjust your monthly minimum charge from nineteen twenty-five to twenty-seventy-nine with an increase in the volumetric rate of, from eight twenty-two to eight eighty-eight. And as you can see, you're looking at proportional increases for each of the next four years after that. So what does this mean? What does this mean in terms of what people pay? Well, remember I already told you that the average customer uses six, about six thousand gallons of water service a month. So that customer pays eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents right now for that service. Under this rate plan, that customer's bill would go to ninety-four dollars and two cents, or an increase of nine dollars a month. If you use only three thousand gallons a month, you, your bill would go up by about six dollars a month. If you use ten thousand gallons a month, your bill would go up by about eleven dollars and eighty-four cents a month. Okay, your average usage is six thousand gallons. That means seventy to seventy-five percent of monthly bills are going to be six thousand gallons or less. Yeah, you obviously have some resident customers who use more than six thousand gallons. You have some who use a lot more than six thousand gallons, but not very many. Most of your customers are in the three to six thousand gallon range. Now, I hate to take a very complex financial plan and try to summarize it in terms of one or two numbers. I don't like to do that, but if I did, I would tell you that for most ratepayers, the impact of this plan would be an increase of about six to nine dollars a month in the first year. And then they would see similar increases for each of the next four years after that. So that customer who pays, who uses six thousand gallons a month, who pays eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents, would see their bill gradually increase by October twenty-six to about a hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-three cents a month. Commercial customers would see a similar increase, similar percentage, and similar increase on each of their bills. Okay, let's take a look at a second scenario. One of the things that cities tend to wrestle with is how do you fund capital improvements? Like I said, you guys have done a great thing. You've managed to fund all your capital improvements without having any debt. However, debt is not always a bad thing, because debt will, properly structured debt can allow your rate adjustments in the short term to be a little bit lower. So what we're going to do is we're going to present to you an example. Let's say you decided to take half of that fifty-three million dollars in debt and fund it through, affect fifty-three million dollars in capital improvements, and fund it through long-term debt. You would be a twenty-year bond with four percent interest. What would, what kind of impact would that have on the plan? Well, here's the, here's the impact, and again, I apologize for bringing so many numbers here. But this is what you saw earlier, the scenario one rate plan. Now, under scenario two, if you issue the debt, the operating expenses aren't going to change at all. They're going to stay the same. Transfer isn't going to change at all. But instead of doing eight, eight million dollars in capital cost transfers, you're only doing three point eight million. In the second year, you're doing three point eight million instead of seven and a half million, but you now are paying four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt service. So you're trading off some of the upfront expenditures for long-term debt. So in the long run, your cost of service is nominally less under scenario two if you issue more debt. And that means the rate adjustments don't have to be quite as high. Now, the advantage of this is that, of course, you're, in the short term, your rate adjustments are less. The disadvantage is, you've now issued debt. You now have debt on your books, and whereas before you didn't have any. There is no right or wrong answer here. It's just a matter of how you, what decision you think is in the best interests of the city. So, this is the proposed rate plan under scenario two. It still requires rate adjustments. There's no circumstance where no rate adjustments would be required. But the rate adjustments are nominally less. How much less are they? Well, let's take a look at this six thousand gallon guy. This person pays eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Under scenario one, in the first year, that bill would go to ninety-four dollars and two cents. But under scenario two, it would only go to ninety-three dollars and four cents. That's about a dollar less. Each year, it would be about a dollar or two less. So that by the fifth year, under scenario one, it's gone to a hundred and thirty-two dollars, but under scenario two, it's only gone to a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So it's actually six dollars and seventy-eight cents less. It's same for the lower volume user, and same for the higher volume user. You might make the argument that that's not a whole lot. But you also make the counterargument is every little bit helps. Yes, sir?
Dan, somewhere I missed what the debt issuance would be.
It would be about twenty-three million dollars in debt phased out over the ten-year period.
Of the fifty.
Yeah, so it would be, you know, three, probably about four to five million dollars every two years. You don't necess, if I recall correctly, that's, that's what we.
Yeah, about every three years.
Yeah, because you don't want to issue debt every year, because you have all these closing costs, you've got to pay all the lawyers, you know? So you only issue debt every few years. You, generally, the general rule of thumb is, you issue the amount of debt that you expect to spend over the next three years. And then, so it would be about one bond issue every two to three years. And that minimizes your payments in the early years. But also keep this in mind, the payments continue beyond year ten, because it's a twenty-year debt. So the rate adjustments will be lesser in the short term, but they eventually will catch up in the long run. So, I got, I'm, I'm just about done. One final thing city staff asks us to take a look at is that some cities try to provide some kind of benefit to some of its neediest citizens. Many cities have what's called a senior citizens rate. What it is, is a rate that only people that are a certain age or older can, can qualify for. Many cities, sixty-five, I would argue there should be sixty, since I just turned sixty-one. But, but it's, it's up to the city to decide. What many cities do is give a discount on the rate to a citizen, to a senior citizen. Ten percent's the norm, but you can make it any amount you want. What are the, what's the benefit of that? Obviously, many senior citizens are on fixed incomes. They're on fixed incomes, if you provide, provide some rate relief to them, that's a real benefit. But there's also a challenge, you know? Rates are like squeezing a balloon. If you, if you squeeze it in one area, it gets bigger in the other area. So if you give a break to your senior citizens, you have to slightly increase the rates on the rest of the citizens to make up the revenue shortfall. How much of an impact would it be? Well, let's look at this mythical six thousand gallon customer. They pay eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents right now. Under scenario one, where you fund everything with capital improvements, it goes to ninety-four dollars and two cents. If you adopt the city's senior citizens rate, that senior citizens rate would only be about eighty-eight dollars. So it would be a much less of an increase. However, if you adopt the senior citizens rate, your residential rate has to go from eighty-four dollars to ninety-seven dollars. So each residential customer would have to pay a couple of dollars more so that the senior citizens can pay a couple of dollars less. So again, there's no right or wrong answer here. It's just a matter of what policy you want the city to, to implement. Well, you'll be happy to know I'm on my final chart. Again, we were, you know, having had the privilege of working for you for the last twenty years, I understand the seriousness of which the city of Duncanville approaches these kind of decisions. This is not an easy thing to decide. Nobody wants to pay more for anything, ever. However, rate plans, if adopted, can really benefit a city and its ratepayers. You might say to yourself, how in the world can rate increases possibly benefit anybody? Well, they benefit in the following ways. The first thing it does is, it enables you, your utility, to fund all of your costs, all of your maintenance costs, all of your operating costs, all of your capital costs, because those costs are going up whether you adjust your rates or not. It will allow your utility fund to continue to operate in a self-sufficient manner. And unlike thirty to forty percent of other cities in the country, you don't require general fund subsidies to run your water operation. And can't emphasize this enough, it gives you fifty-three million dollars of investment in the future of the city of Duncanville. And that will allow you to provide safe drinking water, effectively treat wastewater, and ensure the best quality of service for all your customers. This is an information presentation only. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any further questions you all might have at this time.
You mentioned earlier on that you wanted, you would explain if you desired the wastewater averaging.
Yes, sir.
Would you do that?
Sure. There is no perfect way to charge for wastewater. Water charging is easy. You have a water meter in front of your house. Water goes to that meter, it's recorded by the meter, and that's what you pay for. There's no such thing as a wastewater meter. So you don't really know how much wastewater goes back. So you don't really know how much wastewater goes back into the system. The water that goes through a meter to a residential house can be used inside the house, in which case it would go back into the sewer system. But it can also be used outside the house for lawn watering, car washing, that kind of thing. So the question becomes, how do we charge for this? We don't know how much each ratepayer is using. And also keeping in mind the fact that you're not the water police. You know, you're not, you're not in the business of going to every home and trying to figure out, well, how people are using water. So how do you charge for it? Well, some cities say, you know what, we're just gonna, we're just gonna charge a flat fee for wastewater, fifty bucks a month for everybody, or whatever the amount is. Well, the advantage of that is it's real easy and it treats everybody the same. The disadvantage of it is that it's real easy and it treats everybody the same. The, the family of five, with five kids, who dumps three times as much sewage into the system, pays the same amount as the couple living on a fixed income. So there's a lot of people that don't think that's fair. Some cities charge based on total water usage. If you, if it goes to the water meter, you pay sewage charges on it. That's easy also, but you're gonna inevitably going to get people coming in and saying, I'm paying sewage charges for water that I'm using to water my lawn. That's not fair. And in a month like this, can you imagine what a sewer charge would be? There's a third average, there's a third system called a winter average. The idea behind a winter average is that in January, February, Mar, in March, those are the months right now. Having a senior moment.
December, January.
December, January, February, I'm sorry. In December, January, and February, those months, it's cold outside, it's very unlikely you're going to be using much of any water outdoors. So basically, the amount of water you use inside your house in December, January, and February acts as a cap on the amount of water, wastewater that you're charged for. Let's say you only use four thousand gallons in December, January, and February. You pay four thousand gallons of water, four thousand gallons of wastewater. Let's say in June, you use twenty thousand gallons of water. You use twenty, you pay for twenty thousand gallons of water, but four thousand gallons wastewater. Because it is assumed that everything above four thousand gallons is going outside. Because you know what, you're not gonna use water differently inside your house in December than as you are in June. Now again, it's not a perfect system. There were people that will argue, well, what if I've got a leak? Or what if I guess, you know, over the Christmas break? Well, yeah, I mean, again, it's not a perfect system. There were people that argue, who was that very smart guy talking? You know, over the Christmas break, well, yeah, I mean.
We didn't do that just.
Who was that very smart guy talking? Again, again, it's not perfect. But it is generally considered by the industry to be the least worst option. The best option of those options that are available, because there is no such perfect one. I can, I would strongly recommend that you not change from a winter average to charging for every thousand gallons. I've been there, I've done that. It's not pretty. Because what will happen is, let's say you change that system. What happened is some people's water bills might actually go down a little bit. Other people's water bills are gonna skyrocket. Who do you think you're gonna hear from? You're not gonna hear from the people whose bills go down, but you are gonna hear from those other people. And they are going to say, you're charging me for water that I'm using to water my lawn. And your answer is, yeah, we are. So when you change a way you charge, when you change the method by which you charge people, you create what's known as winners and losers. And what happens is the people who disproportionately get impact are, are not going to be happy about it. And there's no real justification for it either. I mean, every city does it differently. Every city is, is free to make their own decision about what they think is most fair, just, and reasonable. The winter average system is what is used by most cities. The other, there's one other imperfection in the winter average system, and that is that here in, here in North Texas, you know, sometimes we have pretty mild winters. Sometimes people actually water their lawn in February. You see, a winter, a winter average is golden for a place like Green Bay, Wisconsin, where it's inconceivable that somebody would water the lawn in January up there. But here in Texas, you know, it's not quite perfect. Finally, finally, there are cities that have very aggressive leak detection programs. So if like the one comment does, if somebody had a, had a large unusual leak in a winter average month, you know, you adjust their bill accordingly if it has found out that their bill, you know, that their bill is unjustifiably high. But the winter average is used often, it's been used here in the city of Duncanville as long as I've been your consultant, and I would recommend that you continue it.
Yes.
And as I'll add, I know that last year was a different year. We did have an ice storm, and we had several weeks, and we dealt with injuries on a case-by-case scenario. And if you have a leak during that time, we do go back to your previous amount. But it's part of the whole process of proving or showing a repair bill of a repair. We even consider just going with the previous year, and we'll work with our policy on that to make sure that if there is something that would have caused a spike in it, we have the flexibility to look at prior years, multiple years, to make sure that it's not completely out of line. And when we looked at the winter averaging and possibly abandoning that process last year, when we had the ice storm, what we noticed is the bills were not that far off. We did have some cases, but we didn't have a large number that made us completely abandon the process. And I wasn't here, but I do know that that was the conversation we had.
Question for Ms. Atmore. Going back to the issuance of debt, I just can't get off of that. Because that's the way I was brought up, you know, pay as you go and get yourself out of debt as quickly as possible. So now, that's why I asked the question, what is our debt that we would be issuing if we were to follow your recommendation somewhere in the range of twenty-three million dollars? What I'm not catching in my mind in terms of putting all the pieces together is how that debt service is accommodated. Still comes out of the wastewater, water wastewater fund? Or are we gonna end up having to subsidize that debt service at four hundred thousand dollars in interest coming out of some other fund? But we're still saying water wastewater is gonna be self-sufficient, pay as you go, it's gonna cover the debt service in addition to everything we're doing. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. So when you, when you issue debt to pay, based on his rate structure, and we're also issuing the debt in order to pay for the infrastructure, we, we look at the rates, and this all comes out of the utility operating fund. And so we build that in, and we build that transfer to what we call the CIP transfer, and we pay for the debt there. It's all taken care of by the utility fund. There's no other fund that has to pay the debt on that. And, and you, when you look at the debt, how I would issue it, we look at the, the plan that comes out of the public utilities, I'm sorry, Public Works, and how they propose to do the projects. And so we look, we will look at it every year and figure out, okay, what's their CIP strategy for doing those projects? How fast can they do it? Can they take, and that's how much debt I would issue for them, whether it be over for two years, if they can take out two years to get the projects done, that's how I would issue it so they can have the funds there.
And they draw down on the amount? Because we realize that one of the problems we're having now specifically with public utilities is the availability of resources. And as much as we wanna be aggressive in, in doing things, we know that projects in this age are not moving as fast. And so we don't wanna issue too much debt, but we wanna have enough that we can keep a steady flow going. Because when projects are ready, when supplies are ready and available, we wanna be ready to go for those. But the borrowing would be the utility fund as an enterprise would actually be borrowing the money against the enterprise.
Look, Dan, this might, this question might be out of your wheelhouse, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Might be more Adina's. But if, if we were to consider issuing debt, would those be COs or Torchinos?
Most cities do COs.
COs.
Is guaranteed by the full faith and credit of the city, but paid for from water and wastewater rate revenues. That allows you to get a lower interest rate and you don't have coverage requirements. So it's a better financing tool. But very importantly, all the debt service is paid from the water and sewer rates. No taxes, no, no nothing.
So maybe this is a premature question. If it is, say, I don't wanna answer that yet.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we've, we've seen the metrics here and understanding those metrics for the debt service in terms of what it's gonna provide for our citizens, which is reduction, which they would like to see. However, on the backside of that, we still have this debt service to cover. Has, has your office done any projections in terms of that four to five-year projection that Dan's put up in terms of the ability to cover that debt service?
Yes, we have. We have Hilltop Securities, which is our financial advisor, has branded numbers based on our, our capacity to pay that debt with the projects. They were also given the list of projects that we had for the water and sewer infrastructure, and they ran the numbers as well. And so that debt structure, we would be able to, to handle with the utility operating fund and the rates that we projected.
So that answers a key question for me, maybe others as well. What we're seeing here is not just a rate plan, but it's, it's a, it's a marriage between our ability to fund things with Hilltop Securities, if we were to go with debt, and the capital improvement projects, and the wastewater, and the water rates themselves. We are not looking at just one single aspect of this. We're looking at multiple aspects of how we can fund this for the future and still do the very best for our citizens in keeping, trying to keep, cap those rates to the lowest level.
Yes.
I mean, rates are gonna go up. I don't, I don't see any way that we cannot do something. Because eventually, it's gonna impact our ability to have what we consider, and you consider as a professional, what we consider as superb infrastructure for our water and wastewater. So looking at these two together, knowing that the debt service has been examined by Hilltop, CIP has been examined by Hilltop, and with what you guys named Will Dan. That this is giving us a pretty comprehensive overview of what's been examined to date. So Mr. McMonade, you had a comment, please.
Yeah, I.
Is your name Will Dan?
No, just, just Dan.
Just Dan. I say Dan.
So, and, and Mary really along with it, because he's mentioned this, is we have increasing number of people in the DFW metroplex. To do a water plan, to, to do it, this stuff is planned out fifty years ahead of time so that they can do that. But then when you start putting all these infrastructure costs for fifty years of planning, it's expensive. And that's, that's one of these other cities, the newer cities are the ones that, when we've stayed the same, these other cities are the ones that are really pulling away from our water resources as well.
Yeah, one thing you mentioned, Doc, about the fifty-year plan. If y'all aren't aware of the work that was done at, was it Cochran Hill and Wintergreen to straighten out that road? When I talked to the Dallas Water Utilities representative that was there when we did the, the grand opening, the ribbon cutting on this thing, now those are eight-foot wastewater lines that have been buried there, eight-foot diameter wastewater lines. And I asked him, why are they so large? He says, because we have forecasted demand for this particular area of Southern Dallas County for the next fifty years. If we didn't put in an eight-foot diameter wastewater pipe, and there's actually two of them underground in there, we would not be able to, Dallas Waste, Dallas Water Utilities would not be able to supply this portion of the county with enough water. So that's a fifty-year program that that came through with those eight-foot diameter wastewater pipes. So there's forecasting going on far beyond our ears of what we see. And I'll, I'll throw another little sidebar into this in terms of the regional transportation counts that amount from the council of governments. They are predicting, and it's pretty, going to be pretty accurate, that the North Dallas, I'll put it like, the North Central Texas region is going to be increasing by a hundred thousand people a year. That hundred thousand people a year are going to be coming to every single city in the sixteen counties of the North Central Texas Council of Governments. And so the strain on the infrastructure of those hundred thousand new residents a year is going to be immense in how it's covered. Fortunately, you see what we are, we're, we're pretty well landlocked. I'm not gonna see us building, you know, another, you know, some developments, putting in four and five hundred houses at a time. I was talking to a council member in Salina. Salina is exploding. And I asked him, I said, how do you accommodate the infrastructure? He says, we don't. He says, we are scrambling to try and figure out, some developers are purchasing land, they're gonna put a thousand houses in some development of acreage in Salina, in that vacant land up north. And those are people, those are cities that are scrambling to cover infrastructure, not just water, but, you know, but all the utilities. So when we look at in terms of the forecast of our population going from forty thousand, seven hundred and six today, in five years, forty thousand, what, eight hundred maybe? Because that's just the amount of land that we do not have available to build it more residential or more commercial. It's a pretty stable, maybe you wanna say status quo compilation for our forecasting of what we're gonna need, which puts us at some advantage, actually, because we're not seeing something that's gonna be so explosive that we can't handle. So it gives Will Dan and Dallas Water Utilities and the Trinity River Authority to looking at the city of Duncanville, some unique perspective to say, it's gonna be kinda stable around here for the next five years simply because our population growth isn't going to be exploding.
And our capacity use has stayed consistent. You have some cities who have maxed out, for example, Granbury has maxed out their wastewater capacity. They won't let new home construction happen until they can expand their system, fortunately, and unfortunately. But fortunately for us is our capacity, our development is so minimal, there is not a need to get increasing capacity. We were worried with the drought that we needed more water, but I've kind of followed up and through some of the council questions is are we still managing it? And I think we're doing a great job, but that goes back to not only conservation, lack of loss, but also the fact that we have a steady development area.
Yeah, and I would cast a guess that our, our capital program is not necessarily one of expansion, but one of maintaining what we have.
It's replacement. And replacement, and, and the real fear, and as someone who worked in a place that had very outdated infrastructure, I had wood pipes that were built in the eighteen hundreds, but most importantly is a major line break could cost millions. We could bankrupt our system. But the beauty of what has happened with this city, and I have to compliment it, and if people haven't heard this, I'll tell you, I've been in a lot of cities, the replacement program we have is superior to any I've seen. And we do a great job proactively, and you haven't had, you haven't heard of boil notices here. And as someone who's very familiar with the leadership in Flint, all of the things that has happened based on this council and the staff's decision have made this city have a very wonderful Public Works system.
We have a lot of stuff to think about. I think the most difficult thing is we've intentionally not increased the rates since two thousand nineteen. It's inevitable that we have to. How do we communicate that to our citizens? And for them to understand the difficult decision that we as a council have to make in terms of what, how we're gonna approach this, whether we're going to issue debt, which I hate to even think about issuing debt, but the effect of issuing debt is a lesser impact on our customers. But at the same time, ain't no free lunch. You know, it's pay me now, pay me later, one way or the other, and how we do that. It's, it's gonna be a tough call for us as a council, but a lot of the city manager and, and finance and public works put all this together. This is a marriage of a huge number of facets of what, how this city is going to be managed for in terms of its utilities and infrastructure for the future. As I said, a lot of people take for granted the fact that they turn on their water faucet and there it is every day. You know, just look at, what, what was the maintenance cost? Patrick, you probably, I don't know, but when we found out that that one water tank was corroded on the inside.
The one million, two million for one?
Yeah.
Two million for one versus two million for two?
Yeah. Yeah, all of a sudden, we get hit with a bill for a million bucks.
And we still have one more to do.
Yeah. So that was, it was unanticipated. It was a million buck, a billion-dollar bill necessary, but we had it. And I think that's what's essential, the key to understand. We didn't have to scramble to find out, how do we do this? Because we can't mess around with our water. It was necessary that we go ahead and, and take care of that tank and make it so that it continues to service our citizens in a usable way. So looking at that in terms of the maintenance, in terms of, I think infrastructure, we talked about what's underground, but think about those pumpings that are above ground. Those tanks and those water tanks and those reservoirs we have above ground, they still need that very, very heavy maintenance. And I keep thinking about what happened during Storm Landon, when that, that, what was it?
One that goes across the interstate.
What was it? Is that a sixteen-inch pipe that goes across you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's a sixteen-inch water line that goes across Interstate twenty, right around Oriole Boulevard. Six breaks. We had six breaks in that water line, and it was repaired within twenty-four hours. No, less than that.
Actually, it's, it's being redesigned.
But we've, no, I'm talking about.
But it was back in.
It was back in operation.
Yeah, yeah, it was repaired and back, and those six breaks were repaired and back in operation within twenty-four hours. Which is, where'd that come from? That's our people. Those people costs are included in the cost of the infrastructure maintenance. If we didn't have those people to get out there with the tools and equipment to repair those six breaks in the eighteen-inch water line, we'd have been in a boil notice. And a lot of people, in fact, just be without water, period, because of that amount of water that goes through that line. Comments, questions?
So we need feedback from council. We are in the final phases of developing budget. So we need feedback from council. Uh, we are in the final phases of developing a budget. Part of the budget development for revenue projections is based on our, our scenarios. And so, uh, if we can go through and come up with a proposal, and then if you don't like it, when we present the budget, we can make changes to it. But I'd just like your feeling, uh, I, I will say, from a management standpoint, city manager, is, I, one thing that I am favorable of is the senior discount. Uh, one of the number one calls we receive is that, as much as this is easy to talk about for our seniors, uh, I would like to figure out what we can do differently from them, even if it's the winter averaging at a different kind of rate. But from a standpoint of how do we help our citizens, I think that as the inflation in the United States is going up, and we do have a aging community, this may be a conversation you all should have with your constituents, but I'm not convinced they would not be supportive of borrowing money to keep their rates low. Uh, the cost increase of us at, right now, funding it on a pay-go scenario is pretty severe, and with the, uh, property rates rising, and I know our portion can only rise so much, but with the county and the city, uh, schools, it's going up. And so, whatever we can do to help them, I know many of you have shared that, but I'd just like your feedback, because I, I need to pick a scenario of some sort, and you can change it afterward. But I just wanna see where your sentiments are. And that's kind of where I was leaning from proposal. You can come back after I propose it and tell me, don't like it, go back to the other, and I can do that, but I've gotta put something in, so.
Is there a scenario three?
There can be if you'd like.
I'm asking you. You've only given us two.
Right, there's only-
I got fifteen days to finish this, so I don't have much time for it.
What, what could a scenario three be?
Whatever you want. Um, you could do more debt, you know, you could, uh, you could do less debt. Um, there, you know, rate makings aren't out of science. There's a lot of different rate structures you could put into place. There's a lot of different paths you can take. So, the more debt you issue, the lower the rate adjustment will be in the earlier years. So, we picked half the system. Let's say you decided three quarters of the system, you'd wanna issue a debt. Thirty-five million, forty million, that would mean anomaly lower adjustment. So, it really, uh, we would look to council for feedback on any further scenarios they'd like for us to look at.
Madam City Manager, why don't we go with the senior discount and sell it then? And I'm sure you can work that up in a bit, do you think?
Yes, 'cause I have your budget, fifteen days. And if you, it, it'll be room if you have questions, that I can come back and those sheets change. But I, I do have to put something in.
Is there any, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Obviously. Uh, that's, that's scenario two, and then the senior discount to seniors.
Is there any knee jerk reaction on the part of council members to, to debt? I mean, should we even consider issuing debt, or is it totally off the table? Because scenario three, four, five, and six could be different variations in terms of how much debt is issued. But if we don't, if we're not even gonna consider issuing debt, then all those scenarios are off the table, and all we're talking about is how do we increase this stuff without going to debt? So is, is there any consensus, you know, do we want city manager and Adina and, and Will Dan to get together and have some discussions on different scenarios of different, uh, capa- debt capacities and debt service, or do we not even wanna talk about debt?
It didn't, doesn't appear that, in, in the first two or three years of the increases, that it, you show the debt creates a substantial difference. And I'm, I'm, I'm just, just listening to all this, and, uh, I'm, I'm on it. Issuing any debt is just not, you know, we can avoid it altogether.
And that's why I ask, you know, my DNA says don't go into debt, but you know, here we are, it's a totally different scenario here, yeah.
So, I was gonna say, yeah, as, as a resident, you know, in a city, I, I, I would be like, ugh, damn. But as a business owner in a city, I understand the city as a business. And so debt is, if we're, we can't have it both ways. We're gonna either have to have the debt to level it out to where we aren't doing increases, or we're gonna have to do the increases. So, I would say debt.
And I don't have a problem with it for the simple reason that, um, we do have a large senior community in Duncanville. And when they're looking at what you might call significant, um, oftentimes, you're talking about dollars, individual dollars, not, not, you know, ten dollars. If you're talking about a dollar, means something to them. So they look at it differently. And, and it's not just that they look at it differently, it's, it's a real issue for them. And I read somewhere where forty percent of retirees, um, in the country are retired on social security only. And I imagine we have a good amount of our seniors that are in that situation. A house may be paid for, they've lived here long enough. But so, if, when you think of it from that, that standpoint, um, whatever amount we could knock it down for those seniors that are in those situations, no pension, just social security, it, it's gonna mean a lot to them at the end of the day. So, I, I don't have a problem with the debt. I, I don't understand it as well as some, what the ultimate impact is. So, when you come back to us, if you could kind of summarize that, again, we, we got a pretty good education on it today. I appreciate that. But when you come back, I may have forgotten half of what I learned tonight. If you could go over that.
We're gonna have Jason back to talk about, so from a borrowing standpoint, Jason Hughes is gonna bring us some information back on borrowing, how you borrow the money. And then, what everyone has told us and been saying for a while is that we're giving away money by not borrowing, because of the way the economy is and the market is. The fact that we keep using our cash is actually hurting us versus helping us right now. And psychologically, it's hard to believe that it's better to borrow money for a house versus to ba- pay cash for a house. However, this is the, the size. This isn't the car you wouldn't pay cash for. This is that nice expensive home that we're buying with cash versus borrowing and paying it out over time, where our money would be earning interest in the bank.
Yeah, and I really appreciate, uh, the mayor's concern over debt. I, I really do. Um, it's one thing that it probably makes us all shudder to think, taking on more debt. But if, if you could come back with a summary that gets us to a, a better, uh, place, as far as being comfortable, I, I think that, uh, maybe we can make some sense out of it. And, and like Dan said, we don't have to go with scenario two to its full extent. We could do, uh-
What percentage was that? Uh, was that a hundred percent capital in scenario two?
Fifty percent debt, fifty percent cap.
And that was only fifty percent of your capital. We're still paying fifty percent in cash, so.
That was twenty-three million dollars, was what I asked you.
It's about right, yes.
Twenty-three million dollars debt.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Harvey?
I guess because I've had some experience in working with municipalities, I will say that debt from municipality is not the same as me going out and getting a personal signature loan, which does, by the way, hurt my credit. But, uh, us engaging in a debt program like this does not negatively or adversely affect our creditworthiness.
Actually increases it.
As, as a matter of fact, it does. And so, if, if, if debt can be utilized, if relieved to some of our rate payers, uh, it should be on the table, and it should be considered. Uh, and, you know, I like it.
Yeah, and what I'm thinking is, following this whole scenario, is, is we get, y'all get together, city manager and, 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 you know, with Hilltop Securities, just as they analyzed our mature, our municipal finances in terms of how much bond money we could issue in the first place, going back to a two thousand nineteen, and I did that. You know, we came up with the twenty million dollars, but after they analyzed our, our city, they said we could actually go twenty-one point six in terms of issuance of debt. So, when we're talking about how much should debt can we issue, scenario two, three, four, whatever, in those different iterations, with Hilltop Securities saying, how far can we go and still not put pressure on our system in terms of twenty-three, thirty, thirty, thirty-five?
That's not a good question for us. We have so much capacity. A lot of cities, what will happen is, they will come to you and tell you, you need to issue debt because you're losing your capacity because you're not issuing. And so, we have, because we are in a good scenario, our capacity is pretty much what we need.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and, and I'm glad to hear you say that, because one of my concerns, I'm sitting there thinking like, okay, we have other projects we're gonna be funding.
Different funds.
Right, yeah, right. And I was gonna say, this is in a, this is in a specific fund. And then you have another one that's in a different box and stuff too, but I still sit there and say, okay, we're still-
Yeah, so this one would be considered completely independent. It would be like this is a, a separate organization borrowing money, because that's what the utility fund is. The general fund, when we start talking about the fire station and other general funding projects, would be borrowed against that fund, and that's where you start hearing your tax raise and everything. But with the water utility fund, for example, cities have even borrowed money for the general fund from the water utility fund to pay it back to fund things. That's not something you wanna do, because these funds are usually, they're enterprise, and when you do it right, they're successful. Uh, however, you do have those different capacities. And what we'll do is, I put down debt and government one-on-one, kind of a briefing, uh, for council, and sometimes we gotta go back to just basics, because as they mentioned, this is not the house purchase, even though that's the big thing, I would say, debt, and how it's looked at from a credit when it comes to organizations like this. And so, we'll do that, and we'll have Jason Hughes, and let's make this as simple as possible, so that everyone and the citizens will know. We will place this presentation, we'll record it online, but we'll also do one on debt, so that our, we can start to educate our citizens on the same thing as we're educated on it.
Uh, Mr. Coach?
And, uh, I, I do wanna say, I'm, I'm not entirely opposed to issuing debt, obviously, but, uh, when we talk about, you go to buying a house or a car, talking about rate increases, it, uh, feels good the first year or two, and then we're looking at two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, and we're looking at, you gotta pay it back.
Could you bring that back up? So, when he's talking, I'd like for everybody to see what he's saying. We can show you. The one that showed the, uh, payment, payback over time.
Scenario two.
There we go.
Right. So, I mean, I'm just, just reminding us, you know, you look at that debt service, scenario one. Look at scenario two, we're looking back again at two thousand thirty, two thousand thirty-one, thirty-two. I mean, I, I plan to live in Duncanville as long as I can, so maybe that's just something for us to keep in mind, even though it feels good to have that relief next year, you know, two years from now. Just to keep those big numbers in the back of our minds that we're gonna have to- What's that?
Goes down?
Goes down.
But you still have, you still have to pay back debt.
No, it goes down. So look at the bottom line at twenty thirty-two.
Look at the total cost of service. Goes down half a million dollars in twenty thirty-two.
It's a difference, it's a, we'll go, that's what, we'll do the one-on-one. It's, it's very hard to understand how can it cost less by borrowing. We'll, we'll have somebody who's better at this, that's on the other side. But I get what you're saying. So, and normally, we say, well, there's a time you gotta pay it back. What you're going to find is, is because we've been so cash focused, and we're losing our cash, it changes it. It's actually, that, that's where they've been trying to tell us for a while. If you look at those numbers and add them up, it actually comes out better. It's not like, it's not like our debt at home and our personal debt. It's a different kind. So that's why we got, we'll get that, and we'll get this from council, because we owe you, we owe everyone more debt explanation, because it doesn't necessarily follow the logic that we are used to from our personal finance. And so-
I, I will, I defer to the experts on that, I think. And I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking on principle. I'm just thinking on principle.
I've had that buyer's remorse too.
Yeah, I'm just thinking on principle, on my debt. And I had another question, Mr. Dan. When we talk about the, the senior citizen rate, you know, so we got it for two thousand twenty-two, what does that look like for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
It would, it would continue to be ten percent less than the residential rate.
So whatever the residential rate is.
It's ten percent less, yes.
So, can we go back to the, I guess, scenario one with the residential rate? So what, what would the senior citizen rate be like, say, in twenty-four, twenty-five?
Um, it'd be about eighty-eight dollars here, be about, um, ninety-three dollars here, about a hundred and two dollars here, a hundred and ten to eleven dollars here, and about a hundred and eighteen to twenty here. That's my mental math.
Better than mine. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we have been firehosed.
No, no, no. We do the budget presentation, though.
With a lot of information, but, okay, but here's, here's, the key is that I think all seven of us now understand that we have the inevitable facing us in terms of a decision. Uh, we can no longer subsidize our water and wastewater rates for us, which we have been doing for the past quarters. So it's going to be difficult for us to communicate, but we're gonna need some help in terms of crafting that communication. You're gonna need some town hall, there's at least one, maybe, I don't know.
We're definitely doing a budget one, but we'll also do just, we'll, we'll have, we're gonna have a lot of stuff out there, including his presentation, but also, like I said, the debt one-on-one for people, and we'll use citizens. We'll do some, uh, group meetings to talk about. We might do a lot more meetings.
At some point in the near future, when we get some of this behind us, we'll need to discuss the possibility of annual rate adjustments. Uh, at least entertain that notion.
That was in his proposal. Uh, so that's part of the proposal, is that whatever we receive would kind of roll over, was that?
Right, five-year plan.
We, Karen wanted to adopt a five-year plan, yes.
So going back to Mr. Reno's comment early on, can you ask questions? The answer is no. Uh, I would encourage everybody listening and everybody that's here tonight, if you have a question, please email them to me and, or your city council member, or to the city manager, me and city manager.
They're gonna all give to me. So if you only have to send it to one, they'll send it to me, and we will get it back.
And we can get those questions answered, because it's, it's one of those things in terms of the governance of a city, when we have a city council meeting, until it's opened up, and it specifically says it's opened up to something like that, we cannot entertain questions from our citizens here. But there's always an open opportunity to communicate with us, answer those questions, so let's get some answers to you. And then some of those answers then can be put into an FAQ.
Yes.
And we can make that very, very public in terms of what needs to be asked. For a lot of people have a lot of questions about this.
And we'll start them right away.
As Karen, as, uh, Cherry said, we're citizens as well. You know, we're sitting here making decisions on what's gonna hit our wallets and our back pockets, just as well as everybody else is in the city. So we are deeply concerned about doing the right thing and keeping our city solvent, and keeping this particular con solvent, so that we can have the right infrastructure in place and continue to have those maintenance pieces done correctly. So any closing comments?
I just wanna thank, I just wanna thank all the citizens for showing up, participating in this. Education is such a big part of communication, citizens, and working well between the citizens and the SAP and the council, so, uh, and now the citizens who are here can also inform those who weren't. So I appreciate everybody that came out.
I'd like to say, I appreciate Dan's presentation, because it, uh, he presented it. He dumbed it down a little bit for me.
There's a reason why he's been doing this for twenty years.
Well, I'm, I'm sure, but, but I, I appreciate it, because I, I'm aware of how you can get yourself in trouble by not taking care of this, um, for his advice. So, uh, I, I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the confidence you've all shown in us over the years.
Thank you. Any closing comments? Okay. Uh, seeing as how our business is concluded, and we're going to adjourn, and the Apple time is seven-thirty, I'll tell you. Thank you very much.